Regular meeting number 17 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Counsel member Harden, please lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the virtue of justice for all.
Monsignor Cody?
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, as the members of City Council of Columbus meet this evening, they ask your blessing. They also ask for a share of your wisdom in order to assist them as they make decisions for our city and for our citizens. As the trees and flowers begin to manifest the beauty of springtime, may they also inspire in us a renewed sense of purpose as citizens of our great city. Be with the members of council, Lord God, and help us all serve one another with generosity and self-sacrifice, accepting our responsibility, however large or small, for the welfare of our fellow citizens. We also remember the citizens of Brussels, Belgium, as we pray for peace and for an end to terrorism. We ask all of these things in confidence. Amen.
Thank you, Monsignor. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Any resolutions by members of council? Counsel member Brown, counsel member Harden, counsel member Page, please.
Thank you, President Klein. I would just like to make a few announcements about some activities going on during our safe spring break initiative. The Columbus Recreation and Parks, along with Radio One, will be hosting pop-up parties at four of our recreation centers this week. Tuesday, we'll be at Feddersen from 1:00 to 3:00. Wednesday, at Barnett, from 1:00 until 3:00. Thursday, at Thompson, from 1:00 until 3:00. And then Friday, at Adams Recreation Center, from 1:00 until 3:00. I would just encourage all of my colleagues and any other department representatives to take the time and just go party with our youth and make sure that they are having a safe spring break. And also volunteers are still needed for the lunch and movie event held at Lyndon McKinley High School this Wednesday from 12:00 until 3:00 p.m. If you are interested, please reach out to Columbus City Schools Steve Stevenson, the director of student mentoring. And thank you, President Klein. Those are all the announcements I have.
Thank you, counsel member Page. Counsel member Stenziano?
Thank you, President Klein. I have one resolution. Tonight, I would first like to invite Coach Will McKinney, who's head coach of the Afrocentric Lady Nubians Girls Basketball Team, his coaching staff, Janika Anderson and Erica Berger, and the players to come forward to the podium. As they come forward, just want to share that this resolution recognizes them as the state champions, so Resolution 76X-2016, celebrating the Columbus Afrocentric Lady Nubians for winning the 2015-2016 Ohio Division III State Championship. For those that don't know, the Lady Nubians ended their season two weeks ago with a wonderful 59-37 win over Marion Pleasant in the state final, winning their fifth state championship in seven seasons. They were actually down at halftime by four, but then outscored their opponents 40 to 14 in the second half, which is very impressive, and again, bringing home another championship. I've had the honor, in my previous elected capacity, to have the Lady Nubians down at State House, so very excited to have you in council chambers. We're proud to have you all again recognize the winning championship ways of the city and Columbus City Schools, and really wanted to recognize and commend Brianna Foster, and I apologize if I mess your name up with the last name Stenziano, that happens to me all the time. But Brianna Foster, Zahira Lenore, Kennedy Zubiki, China Chambers, Da'J Denham, Amari Grace, Leah Morrow, Ayana Harrison, Antoinette Williams, Kiana Hopson, Jordan Horston, and Cashmere Smith-Hogard for continuing that winning tradition. With that, I was curious if there's any comments from my colleagues?
Just congratulations. I feel like y'all are down here every year. You win so many darn championships.
Thank you, council member Stenziano. I just want to say congratulations to the Lady Nubians. It's always a pleasure to have you in council chambers, and certainly you have such a legacy of winning, not only winning on the basketball court, but also going off after you go to college, to do great things as you go off to college and move on with your careers. I also want to say to the coach, thank you for your leadership with these young ladies, continuing to help them be successful again on the court, but also giving them the skills to be successful in life. I also want to thank your parents, because we know that there isn't anything you can do, especially at this age, without the support of your family. I know one family member is in the audience today, and that's Clay Chambers, that's China's dad. And I know China and certainly Clay, almost every single one of his daughters have played for the Lady Nubians, and it has been quite successful. So Clay, congratulations again, and China, congratulations to you. And we grew up on the same street, so I know, I remember when Clay was born, he hates me to say that, but he was born, and the look at his daughters doing so well. So congratulations, ladies. Job well done. Thank you.
If there's no other comments, I move for...
He's going to speak?
He's going to. If there are no other comments, I move for adoption.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Coach, players, the podium is all yours.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say, I want to say thank you to Mr. Chambers, too. He's had three daughters win a state championship at Afrocentric. His first one won in 2007, SETI, and then Chelsea won a state championship in 2009, and now his younger daughter, China, just won one in 2016. So, you know, thanks a lot, Clay. Appreciate that. And also, I would like to just thank all of the members and everything that you guys do here at the city council. I heard you talking about the Parks and Recs, and several of these young ladies, if not all of them, are actually members of Parks and Recs, and that's what they come through, starting out playing basketball. Mrs. Featherstone, all the other park directors do a great job of supporting Afrocentric Girls' Basketball. We also practice over at Dodge Rec Center. So it's nice to have the support of the Parks and Recs and all the things that they do to help us out at Afrocentric. And we're very proud to represent the city of Columbus. We're very proud to represent our school, our school district, and all of our families. It's great to be able to represent your city, and we, you know, right around the corner. So we really appreciate you guys having us down here, and thank you very much.
I'd just like to say congratulations in a more formal capacity, but also to the players, especially the ones that go on to play college basketball. Just be nice to the referees, okay? Because I know that with the program that you have set up at Afrocentric, there are many players that play at the Division I level, and I know when I'm refereeing the basketball games, whether it's in the Mid-American or the Horizon League or the Atlantic Ten, you occasionally hear a player that is playing from Afrocentric High School, and they represent the city of Columbus well. But just remember, there's people that wear the stripes that are from the city of Columbus, too, okay? So y'all keep that in mind. But congratulations.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. I have one resolution. I'm going to ask Autumn Tribetta and Michelle Moskowitz-Brown and also Steve Snyderhill to walk towards the podium. It's Resolution 75X-2016, is to recognize March of 2016 as National Nutrition Month in the city of Columbus, whereas National Nutrition Month is a national education and information campaign started in 1980 and created annually in March by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, focusing attention on the importance of making informed food choices and developing sound eating and physical activity habits. Whereas National Nutrition Month promotes the academy and its members to the public and the media as the most valuable and credible source of timely, scientifically-based food and nutrition information. And whereas childhood obesity is a national epidemic, not just a family or city problem, in fact, in Franklin County, pediatric obesity is a local emergency. During the 2015 school year, 30% of the preschoolers, and an estimated 37.8% of all students in grades K through 13, were overweight or obese, putting them at risk for serious health conditions. And whereas in 2013, almost two-thirds, 64.5% of adults in Franklin County were overweight, and of those were overweight, almost half, 31.2% of the adults in Franklin County were obese. And whereas obesity contributes to many chronic health conditions, including diabetes and heart disease, and whereas reducing obesity decreases health risk for thousands of residents in Franklin County, lowering healthcare costs. Whereas Columbus Public Health, CPH, is a leading city of Columbus, leading the efforts in the city of Columbus to combat obesity through initiatives that promote active living, healthy eating, and nutrition, with programs that include creating a healthy communities network, healthy places, healthy children, healthy weights, the Institute for Active Living, and the WIC program. And whereas CPH partners with a number of organizations to increase access to healthy food and physical activity through local matters, veggie bucks, fresh foods here, safe routes to school, art walks, landmark talks, as well as farmer's markets, community gardens, biking and walking paths. Whereas the theme for the National Nutrition Month of 2016 is to savor the flavor of eating right, which encourages everyone to take the time to enjoy food traditions and appreciate the pleasures, great flavors, and social experiences that food can add to our lives. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize March of 2016 as the National Nutrition Month in the city of Columbus. And first I move to amend this submitted to the clerk, and I move for passage. Thank you. And I don't know, thank you. I don't know... Oh, I'm sorry. Two times. Sorry, two times. Amendment, correct.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Now I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you so much. All right. I don't know if Autumn, you going to speak first? Go ahead.
Council President Pro Tem Tyson, Council President Klein, council members, thank you so much for recognizing nutrition, not only on behalf of Columbus Public Health and a registered dietitian, but all of the individuals and organizations that support and promote healthy eating in our community. We really work hard to make the healthy choice the easy choice, especially for the residents that don't have great access to food and healthy food. And so I have a few others with me here, too, that would like to speak. Thank you again, and thank you for your leadership on the Local Food Action Plan, which Michelle Moskowitz-Brown will talk briefly on.
Council President and council members, on behalf of the WIC program for Columbus Public Health, I just want to say thank you for putting National Nutrition Month above everything and putting it on the resolution. We serve about 116,000 client visits a year at the WIC program, 38,000 different clients that have nutrition needs, and we recognize the importance of nutrition in our lives. And WIC is the biggest employer of dieticians and diet techs in the country, basically. So we all understand, both in our personal lives and for other clients, we serve the importance of nutrition, and we really appreciate you guys putting this on the agenda.
Thank you, Council President Klein and Council Member Pro Tem Tyson and council members. It's an honor for local matters to be recognized. We teach children and adults what healthy food is, how to grow it, how to cook it, and how to access it affordably every day, serving over 11,000 individuals with really hands-on, in-depth education from six hours to 24 hours. And I will tell you that there is hope for the future. We teach kids every day, and there is, it's really rare that we find a child who will not try vegetables and who will not eat a green smoothie. And just last week, I was at Ohio Avenue Elementary with the Salvation Army program after school, doing a cook-off challenge, which is basically like a chef's battle, essentially. And the girls on my team, I said, "What's your favorite vegetable?" They said broccoli, carrots, scallions, mushrooms, and we just cooked up a storm. So we are hopeful for the next generation that we will reverse the tide of childhood obesity. And local matters is also working on a systemic level, thanks to the work of the county and the city council, to create the Columbus-Franklin County Local Food Action Plan. We're about more than halfway through the process, and right now we have a policy and program recommendations report that's open for public comment through April 1st. You can find that at columbus.gov/lfab, L-F-A-P, Local Food Action Plan. So please comment and be a part of the system change that we all want to create. Thank you.
I just have a couple of announcements. The first is that I have four hearings I need to announce. The first one is tomorrow, Tuesday, March 29th, at 3:30. I'll be holding Part One of a two-part Minority Health Month hearing in council chambers. Minority Health Month is in April, and we're starting our hearings tomorrow. During this hearing, we'll highlight what our city's efforts are in minority health in terms of addressing various disparities and some of the challenges that we are facing in our community. Also, then tomorrow at 5:00, we will move into our regularly scheduled Health and Human Services Finance Committee hearing that we have every other week. And then the capital budget process, as many of you know that this is a time of year when the city generally begins its hearings on the capital budget, and this year is no different. We will be having our capital budget public hearing on Tuesday, March 12th, at 5:00 in council chambers. And the administration will give their presentation, and then we'll also allow speakers that evening. And then lastly, that same day, we will have at 4:00 our regularly scheduled Health and Human Services Committee, and all that is Tuesday, April 12th. And the last announcement that I want to make is that for all city, city of Columbus employees, on this March 31st, we'll have our dollars and cents, our financial literacy summit, and we will have free tax prep, financial planning resources, direct deposit information, self-service kiosk, deferred comp, higher ed, and retirement planning. And there'll be a number of banks that will be participating here at City Hall. That's all I have. Thank you. That's from 4:00 to 11:00 to 4:00. Thank you.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Are there any comments by our elected officials? Mr. Dorian? The Treasurers Office or the City Attorney's Office? I don't see anyone here from the judicial branch. At this time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda in Public Service and Transportation. We have 726-2016. In Recreation and Parks, we have 373-2016. In the Environment Committee, we have 745-2016. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to waive second reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We'll now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading.
Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 579-2016. Public Safety Committee, ordinance 675-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 744-784-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 421-627-679 and 712-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, ordinance is 729 and 730-2016. Zoning Committee, ordinance is 711-714-787-799 and 835-2016.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each and to the record?
Resolutions of expression 71X, 70X, 73X, and 74X-2016. Finance Committee, ordinance is 709-713-780-2016. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 616-2016. Environment Committee, ordinance 541-2016. Public Safety Committee, ordinance is 633-663-669-720-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 685-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 366-582-583-668-670-671-2016. Housing Committee, ordinance is 586-716 and 717-2016. Technology Committee, ordinance 503-2016. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 522 and 842-2016. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0040-2016 and 41-2016.
We do have one speaker slip. That is Nathaniel George Wilkins. Looks like you're speaking for ordinance 716-2016. Welcome back to council.
1612, I'm here to announce that Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, chairman of Sully, vacant and abandoned property in North Flinders. I just want to know what would the property be used for and how long that this property had been in the land bank of 1565 of East Fourth Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, could you get back to Mr. Wilkins and give him the information he needs about the property in question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Director. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent action? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Consent action passed. We'll now proceed for the second reading of 30-day table and emergency legislation. The first committee is Health and Human Services Committee, chaired by President Pro Tem Tyson. President Pro Tem Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have ordinance number 0489-2016 to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., doing business as Primary One Health for the provision of medical director services, to authorize expenditure of $30,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City codes related to competitive bidding. The Board of Health has a need to contract for medical director services from Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers, Inc., doing business as Primary One. This contract will provide medical director services for women's health and family planning clinic at Columbus Public Health. This clinic provides reproductive and family planning services to women of our community, which includes annual exams, pregnancy testing, reproductive life planning, contraception, counseling, and sexually transmitted infection testing. And the medical director is oversight and provision of the medical practice. I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0659-2016, is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Southeast, Inc., for the provision of social services, social support services for the Ryan White Part A HIV care grant program, to authorize expenditure of $510,933 from the Health Department's grants fund into declaring an emergency. Have Kevin Willis here, who's from Southeast, if he'll come to the podium. He's going to speak on this legislation.
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'd like to just thank everybody for the opportunity to come and present this information before you today. Basically, I would just like to stress the fact that what we do at Southeast Incorporated is administer a program called Success in Housing. Success in Housing, it basically is a program in which we provide clean, safe, and affordable housing, and we do this through non-medical case management. We do it through emergency financial assistance, and we also provide rental assistance. And we, our primary goal is preventing homelessness, improving health, and promoting stability, because it's so important to realize that we often take for granted, you know, where we're going to sleep tonight, but oftentimes, people run into situations to where they might have a crisis in which it makes it difficult for them to be able to make these decisions. And oftentimes, when you don't have any way of knowing whether or not your utilities are going to be covered, or your rent is going to be paid, or whether or not you're going to have a roof over your head, that can cause a great deal of stress. And unfortunately, the clients that we serve are already dealing with an immune system that's compromised. So additional stress brought on by this crisis is only going to make this stress get worse. So what we try to do immediately is reduce that stress, and we do that, just say, for instance, if a person has a situation in which they're about to be evicted, what we want to do first of all is contact that landlord ASAP. We want to let that landlord know that that person has submitted an application to our program. We're working with that person to get that situation resolved. And once that landlord knows that there's an agency that's working with that client to get the situation resolved, then they're going to be less likely to move forward with that eviction. If there's a situation in which the utilities are about to be disconnected, we automatically call the utility company. We make a pledge in behalf of that client, letting the utility company know, like, hey, this person is taken care of. So what that does is that avoids that disconnect. If there's a situation in which those utilities have already been disconnected, and they contact us, what we'll do is we'll make a call to the utility company right away, and that utility service can be restored as quick as a flip of a switch, due to the funding that you guys approved. And we just want to let, I just want to let you know, in behalf of Southeast Incorporated and Columbus Public Health, we really appreciate this opportunity. It's a very, very rewarding program. Oftentimes, we see in situations in which, when we're struggling and going through different trials in our day-to-day life, one of the best ways to overcome that stress is to reach out and help someone. And, you know, homelessness is something that can, you know, be at our doorstep on a moment's notice. That's all it takes is just a paycheck. Everybody's a paycheck away from a rough situation. So as I said before, we really thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to administer this funding. And we've served, since the inception of this program, 2014, we've served over 1,300 clients, and we hope to serve close to 1,000 just in the year of 2016 alone. So we really appreciate, as I said before, the opportunity to administer this grant.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, for coming down and sharing the Success in Housing program, this program that really focuses on individuals, providing financial assistance for individuals living with HIV and AIDS. So thank you for the work that you do each and every day, and everyone does need to have a safe place to live, and so I thank you for what you do. If any questions or comments from my council members, I'd move for passage for the $510,933 for Southeast.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And the last ordinance I have is 0727-2016, is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Ohio State University Hospital to provide laboratory testing for the Ryan White Part A medical providers, to authorize expenditure of $81,734 from the Health Department's grants fund, to pay the cost thereof, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the city code, and to declare an emergency. Laboratory testing and diagnostic services are required to assure quality laboratory services for eligible persons living with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio through this Ryan White program. And one of the providers for this program is Ohio State, and is the OSU Internal Medicine LLC, and they are required to utilize...
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. The next committee is actually going to be the Environment Committee. We're going to go to Chairperson Brown, who chairs that committee. Councilmember?
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Environment, we have ordinance number 745-2016, which I'd like to move to table to April 11th, and I request a voice vote, please.
So 745-2016 was on consent. It was removed. There's a motion for tabling by voice vote. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Harden? Page? Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson? President Klein?
Yes. Legislation tabled.
Thank you. That's all I have in Environment.
Thank you, Chairperson Brown. The next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Shannon Harden chairs the committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation, we have 0715-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse various property owners for the replacement of concrete curbs to authorize expenditure of up to $25,000 within the Streets and Highways Improvements Fund for this purpose and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is exciting because the city will partner with homeowners to fix the curbs in front of their homes. This is, this program has been going on since 1988. Last year, we put some additional funds in the program, and really, the big thing is letting folks know about it, because we want the funds to be run down, to be spent. And so right now, we are reimbursing at $32 per lineal foot. So if you, if you, once your curves are fixed, you can work with our office. You can call 614-645-7497. They'll tell you, they even have a list of contractors that you can work with, but you can choose any contractor, I think, and we will reimburse up to market rates, which is about $32 per lineal foot for curb reimbursement. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, I have ordinance 0722-2016 to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with HNTB Ohio, Inc. for engineering, technical, and surveying services in connection with the traffic signal installation, Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase E project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,300,000 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is for Phase E of the Columbus Traffic Signal System, which is an ongoing effort to modernize and transition existing signal intersections to the new central traffic control system. The nuts and bolts of this ordinance results in the fiber optic cable, wireless device, and other electronic equipment being installed at intersections throughout the city. The broader perspective of this ordinance is that it demonstrates that the city of Columbus truly is making those steps to improve our infrastructure. And so with no question or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, we have 0723-2016, and I actually will move to table to 41116 by voice vote.
Ms. Brown? Harden?
Yes.
Page? Stenziano? Tyson? President Klein?
And next, I have 0771-2016 to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Prime AE Group and Hill International, Inc., for the roadway improvement, construction, inspection, and materials testing 26 project, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $500,000 each, up to a total of $1 million from the Streets and Highways Bonds Funds. This is a professional service contract that we have, that will, it's a new classification. Director, do you have any additional comments on?
Sure. Thank you, Chair Harden, President Klein, members of council. This is a new design mechanism that the Public Service Department is going to use to supplement our staff during construction inspection activities. What our staff does is go out and inspect multiple capital improvement projects, either done by the city, done through ODOT, or done through another city agency. We use this, our own staff, but we've had a lot of projects programmed in for the next couple of years. So we've entered into this agreement, or we're proposing to enter into this agreement, to supplement our staff, to help us out with that inspection process.
Thank you, Director. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And lastly, if we could flip back to page nine of our agenda to consent, we have 0726-2016. First, I move, oh, sorry, to author 0726-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract, or enter to multiple agreements with the Central Ohio Transit Authority relative to the construction and maintenance of the FRA-CODA Cleveland Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Project, to accept payments from the Coda service rendered by the Department of Public Service during and after the completion of the project, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance allows the city to enter into contract with Coda to construct what will be known as the Cleveland Avenue Bus Rapid Transit Line. This will be a 15.6-mile line, high-capacity transit line between downtown to State Route 161, with extended services northward to Polaris Parkway and Africa Road. This is an important ordinance because it represents a deep investment in transit infrastructure by the city, Coda, and our partnering municipalities of Westerville, Minerva Park, and Blinton Township. This line is a tremendous opportunity for the communities along Cleveland Avenue, as the BRT is laying infrastructure and commitment by connecting the two of the city's largest job centers, downtown and Polaris, to communities and neighborhoods. When the BRT comes online in 2017, communities like South Linden, North Linden, and Northland will be connected to jobs and commerce in new and exciting ways. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all that I have in my committee's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. We did remove one piece from Recreation and Parks, so I'm going to move to that committee. Councilmember Page shares that committee. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Recreation and Parks, and we can find it on page nine, we have ordinance 0373-2016 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, known as COWIC, to provide summer youth programming from March 2016 through February 2017, to authorize the expenditure of $430,000 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation for $433,000 employs 200 youth ages 14 through 24 throughout the city of Columbus over the summer. And the city is just one of several sources for the SOAR Hire program, and the youth may be placed throughout any of our city departments. The city contribution has no eligibility requirements for those who apply, and the application will go live on April 11th and will remain open for one week. Now, I would like to ask two employees of COWIC who are here in support of the legislation, Mrs. Gail Troy and Mrs. Nolan, to come forward and offer some comments in favor of ordinance 373-2016.
Good evening, President Klein and councilmembers. We are pleased to be here tonight to support SOAR Hire, our summer youth program, and we bring thank you from the Workforce Development Board, as well as from COWIC, that we received these funds. We've been supported by the city since 2006, and over 14,000 youth and young people, young adults, have been able to get summer jobs, and we really appreciate the support. We couldn't do it without you. And with that, last year, we were able to serve over 600 youth and young adults, and we had over 100 employers that joined our program, that they helped to pay wages. So with that, I would like to introduce Gail Troy, who's the administrator of the program, and she'll tell you what we're doing this year.
Good evening, President Klein and council. First, we're so excited to have the opportunity to provide summer programming for our opportunity youth. SOAR Hire, successful opportunities to achieve and reconnect, is a program that engages not only the community, our business partners, but Franklin County commissioners as well. We have three models. First is our transitional model, that are for the young people, 14 or 24, who may not have any work experience or little work experience. Then we have our work-based learning model, and those are for individuals who have maybe a little more than a year of work experience, and they're between the ages of 14 and 24 also, a more sophisticated model. And then we have our SOAR Hire Academy, and that's for young people, 18 or 24-years-old, with one year or more of work experience. And that's where our business community comes to the table, to provide the salaries and wages for those young, youth and young adults for permanent and full-time employment. So we're excited about the opportunity to serve this summer, and looking forward to you guys being engaged as well.
Thank you.
Thank you both for, I have a quick question for you. Sorry. Thank you both for coming down this evening. Could you let the viewing and listening audience know how they can find out more about the summer hire program and also apply?
So we are in the process now of finalizing our application. Next, we go to our website. That's coic.org. We'll have announcements as when the application will be launched. We're looking at launching the application starting the week of April the 11th, and that's going to be a short window, because the spaces are limited due to the funding. So go to coic.org. We'll have announcements as to the actual timeframe when the application will be launched during the week of April the 11th.
Thank you, Mrs. Troy. Are there any other questions or comments? President Protem Tyson?
Yes. Thank you, first of all, Councilmember Page for putting this legislation forth. I also want to thank Ms. Nolan and Mrs. Troy for being here and speaking on this legislation. This legislation is really important for our young people. I know that most of us have summer jobs, and we know the importance of having a summer job. I know that we don't have the available funds to do as much as we want, but certainly, we want to make sure that, with Councilmember Page is showing that, that this city does care about our young people, and are certainly funding it, looking at, we hope we pass legislation for $430,000. It is important, all young people want to work. Most of them want to work and have that opportunity, and this gives them that opportunity. So thank you for your leadership in this program. I know it's also one of the programs that, at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that they highlighted summer jobs from last summer, and our city was one of those, one of the cities within the booklet that they gave out about having a successful program. So congratulations to you and your work, and thank you, Councilmember Page, for moving this legislation forward to help the young people in our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have this evening.
Councilmember Page, the next committee is the Technology Committee chaired by Councilmember Stenziano. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in the Technology Committee, we have ordinance 645-2016 to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology and the Director of the Human Resources Department to continue an annual software maintenance and support contract with Intellinetics, Inc., for a document management system utilized by the Human Resource Employee Benefits Risk Management Division, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $1,800 from the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund, and declare an emergency. The renewal of this agreement will provide for software maintenance and support services for the document management system utilized by the Department of Human Resources Risk Management Division. As the city purchases its Intelliview software from Intellinetics, we must purchase annual support and maintenance from Intellinetics. As such, this ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code in accordance with Chapter 329, due to the fact that no one else can provide this type of service required. Emergency action is requested to expedite authorization of this contract in order to facilitate and maintain uninterrupted services from the supplier through March 31st, 2017. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all we have in technology. If I could continue with Public Utilities. Tonight in the Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance 500-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification for the Professional Construction Management Services Agreement with URS Corporation, Ohio, for the Division of Water to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $6,121,000 within the Water Go Bonds Fund, and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvement budget. This is a professional construction management project, which will facilitate the construction, administration, inspection services for projects of the Division of Water Capital Program. These projects are all related, but to the drinking water supply and treatment systems. They are incorporated in the capital improvement program for various reasons, including meeting regulatory requirements, expanded supplies to meet development needs, maintenance of the water supply and treatment facilities, and improving the reliability of the city's drinking water supply. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Last ordinance I have in Public Utilities is 563-2016 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a contract with UCL, Inc., for the State Route 710 East Tank Painting Improvements Project, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $1,142,277.75 within the Water Go Bonds Fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvement budget. As I learned, we currently have 37 water tanks in the distribution system maintained by the City of Columbus Division of Water. To keep these tanks in optimal conditions, different tank interiors and exteriors need to be recoded every year. And so if there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, that's all I have in Public Utilities.
Thank you, Stenziano. The next committee is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. Tonight, we have three ordinances that have to deal with ethics in the city of Columbus. These ordinances reflect the proposals that Mayor Ginther and the city council introduced last October to expand disclosure for elected officials, enhance transparency for lobbyists, and increase campaign finance disclosure requirements for elected officials and local candidates. We should always strive to increase accountability and transparency in government. The legislative changes we propose in many ways go above what is already required by state law. After carefully considering these proposals and collaborating with the administration, stakeholders, and through a public meeting, the public itself, council is ready to bring these ordinances forward for consideration. Before we do so, I'd like to thank a couple people who worked hard and diligently on this. The first from Mayor Ginther in his office, Brian Clark, Tracy Retchen, and Kim Paul, and of course, Mayor Ginther himself. I would also like to thank Representative Mike Curtin, Dr. Herb Asher of Ohio State University, for their invaluable contributions to the process. I'd also like to thank my fellow council members for their thoughts, concerns, and teamwork in helping to refine and add even more value to these proposals. And certainly thank my staff, namely John Oswald, Mike Kessler, and Ed Roberts, who worked hard to help draft the legislation as it is being proposed today. And finally, I'd like to thank the public. The public weighed in heavily, and we appreciate the comments made at the public hearing to help shape the legislation that we have. These are only the first steps in the city council's ongoing process of a holistic, long-term approach to strengthen our current policies. And I look forward to future collaboration with Mayor Ginther, my colleagues, community stakeholders, and city residents, to make our policy some of the strongest and the best in the state. As I said many times, on many occasions, there's nothing more important to me and to this council than ethics reform, ethics transparency, and accountability in government. We take this very seriously, and we're proud of the legislation that we're putting forward as a start to address any appearances of impropriety in the city of Columbus, and to make sure that the faith in government in the form of representative democracy is here with this elected body. We do have one speaker on 842016, so I'd like to invite him forward, is Mr. Joe Motil. Mr. Motil, welcome back to council.
President Klein, Protem, President Tyson, members of city council. I do not see a need to create I do not see a need to create yet another layer of bureaucracy and spending of the taxpayers' dollars on full-time ethics officers, when I feel there's really greater needs in this community. City Council members are already provided with annual training regarding ethics, and may receive both formal and informal guidance from the Ohio Ethics Commission when they request it. New ethics legislation, I feel, should also include appointed members to bodies such as the Board of Zoning Adjustments, the Development Commissions, and the Downtown Commissions and others. In order to protect the public from financial conflicts and definite conflicts of interest, city-elected and public officials should not be permitted to take campaign contributions or anything of value from any public union organizations that have a collective bargaining agreement with the City of Columbus, since it is this body that approves their contracts. This should also include any individual, developer, organization, or LLC that receives a tax abatement. The granting of tax abatements and then receiving a campaign contribution from those mentioned is comparable to money laundering and should be considered a criminal act. Any campaign contributions from these individuals, organizations, that is funneled through a political party's campaign organization and received by a public official or their campaign committee should also be in violation of the new ethics legislation or be considered later. There is no need to spend the taxpayers' time and money on a searchable database for campaign contributions and expenditures or additional campaign finance filings. Current filings that are required of a candidate include an annual pre-primary, primary, post-primary, semi-annual, pre-general, five-day general, and post-general reporting. This easily provides sufficient information on campaign contributions and expenditures for the public's viewing during an election cycle. Any additional reporting would be burdensome to those citizens seeking public office that are not affiliated or endorsed by major-party organizations, and all this information is already easily accessible with a few simple clicks and typing in the name of a candidate on the Franklin County Board of Elections website. I agree with the proposed legislation's additional requirements for lobbyists reporting three times a year, and additional disclosure beyond the state requirement for gifts provided to officials, including the type of gift, who gave it, and the value of that gift. But I do not feel that this legislation goes far enough into addressing what are obvious financial conflicts. It also adds unnecessary campaign filings and use of tax dollars that duplicate a database that is already exists through the Franklin County Board of Elections. It is very user-friendly and very comprehensive. So again, I think this is a little repetitive in terms of creating such. I don't feel that, you know, it's really necessary to use our time in doing so, and I, again, I hope you would consider that in the future. You mentioned citizens' input on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Motil, and certainly, I know you were present at the public hearing for our ethics legislation. Appreciate your participation there and you coming down this evening. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on these three pieces of legislation before we move forward for consideration? Seeing none, the first is 84-2016 to amend Section 2321.54 of the Columbus City Codes to increase legislative agent disclosure requirements, and to enhance penalties for violations of this section. I move for passage, if there's a second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed, 86-2016 to enact new Section 2321.56 of the Columbus City Codes to strengthen ethics and financial disclosure requirements. I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, 87-2016 to amend Section 2321, or .53 of the Columbus City Codes to increase campaign finance disclosure requirements, and to increase public access to campaign finance reports. I move for passage. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed. We do have a couple non-agenda speakers. We do not have zoning tonight, so can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned, and we will take non-agenda speakers momentarily.